Okay, we're gonna get going. It's November 7th and this is a regular meeting of the...
I'm not sure.
Elizabeth.
We're listening.
Alright, so this is November 7th. We're here for a joint meeting of the New Market Building Committee and School Board. We've got an agenda before us and the first thing we'll do is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First order of business is to look at the meeting minutes of August 20th. Those are in your packet. I noticed, and Russ pointed it out to me, a typo on page, on page two, it says the renovations will continue through 2021. Ouch. So, so 2020 is the correction. We're closer than that, so that's all I noticed. If somebody on the building committee wants to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Salute.
Is there a second? Russ says a second. If there are any other notations, none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'm staying.
Next, Greg, an update on the moving and phasing at the Junior Senior High?
Sure. Actually, we just recently, as of November 4th, opened up the center core of the building, or the second floor of the building, to occupied spaces. So now we have students in that area. That also meant we closed the 1925 building, which is now the final phase of our construction project. And the demolition has started in that space, so that's on moving forward. So we're right on target. We do have a scheduled timeline for opening up the new cafeteria in December. So we're looking forward for our next step is getting that open and then, still on target for our April 2020 substantial completion date.
Great. And again, everything's done at the elementary? Over the break, they're gonna redo the flooring in the hallway?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Maybe a typo or a question to add, but it says the only final phase, start date is 6/2018, sort of.
Yeah, where are you looking, Russ?
Uh, my, Greg's report is, first key milestone table, and on the east end it says only the final phase is 6/2018, start date.
That's when we start of the project?
Well, I know, but it was the final phase, it was open again. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
I do have the August, well, April 2020 as the forecast conclusion.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. And that covers, I guess, Greg, the project updates as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's nothing further on that. And so what we've done, just to give a little context, we're gonna get into a PowerPoint presentation now. We spent some time since when we met last in August to sort of consolidate the ad alternate list that we've been working on way back when. So it's by the wayside now, timing-wise, items that if we wanted to do, we can't do them anymore because we're beyond it. And Susan's also undertaking a review. So we're back with the buildings. Teachers have settled in to the new spaces, so the renovated spaces. And we sort of took stock over the last couple months of what they're experiencing. Is there things missing? Are you missing an outlet? Are you, could you use some millwork or things like that? So Susan went through an extensive process where she got input from all the teachers and admin, sort of in a Google submission. As you might imagine, it's like, it can be like a Christmas list for people. So we got lots and lots of requests. And so Susan, with her admin team, has been sifting through that and been sifting through what's really a priority versus more what's a, like a wish list item. And so she sugared all of that off. We'll get to a slide here tonight, which sort of, and it's the slide on the bond interest proposed warrant article. It's the stuff that, the combination of the ad alternates and the process Susan went through to sift it down, these are what we think we really need to, you know, deliver the program. So I just wanted to put that in context. The format of the, of the financial presentation's a little different. We're gonna run through that with you as part of the slide, but we wanted to simplify it, provide sufficient detail but not get us bogged down in the weeds. Certainly if anybody has questions on, and they want more detail, we can provide it. But that, that's the reason for the different format. It just puts everything in one context. It puts, puts the, we start out with what was the total budget and the various aspects of that, what we've actually spent today, what we have encumbered, what we see going forward as contingency items. So we thought it was easier to, so an easier flow to sort of the way we've got it here to step through all that, and we're gonna do that right now. Susan?
Well, so there's the PowerPoint, and then also in your packet, there should be two other documents, maybe from tables on it. So I'll be referring to all three as well, as we go through. And I'm not gonna go, you know, into intimate detail in any line, rather I will, you know, present it at a maybe 5,000-foot level, and then if there's other questions, then certainly we can take them anywhere we'd like to, certainly. Others in the room are much more familiar with some of the details, for obvious reasons than I am. So I think together we can probably answer any questions in my rise. So as Mike said, you know, turn the, turn the page. I started out by, you know, identifying, you know, what was approved for this building project in terms of funding. And so there's three kinds of components to how it was funded, primarily through bond proceeds, which you brought before the committee. But there was also a rebate that you received for about $45,000 and the sale of the shed for $2,800, I think it was.
Thirty-two hundred.
So the combination of those three sources are what goes into funding, you know, the project here. So in total, the project was $38,991,283. So those numbers often seem pretty familiar to you all on the building committee and this board as well. Any questions about that?
Russ, you were gonna ask me about that forty, forty...
Yeah.
That's what, that's about.
I have just one other short. There is a contingent, I got a little confused, not all the contingencies on each page, but in the construction, there's a contingency as well, right?
Exactly. So the contingency here is what was approved as a contingency for the building project. The other contingency is what's being held by the construction company. So they have a contingency, and as a building committee, you have a contingency. This three-and-a-half percent, or 1,377,000, is your contingency.
And what was the original contingency, the whole block in the construction?
The original contingency was 1,300, this between the two schools, 1,302,4,148. Three hundred, it was 320 for the elementary and 1,2,0148 for that school.
So the total between construction and, you call it school board contingency of the project, contingency of the 74.
Yeah. And that, that shows up on the expanded version of the financial report.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so during the project, of course, you know, since I propped up along the way, and Greg was kind enough to put together some of the big ticket items that you approved, you know, during your journey. In addition, of course, you had a lot of smaller items that ate up your contingency, but hopefully these all some, or were pretty familiar to you. So the total of these, you know, substantial contingency items was $741,246. Again, there were an awful lot of other things along the way that didn't rise to this level, but certainly that's a significant portion of what you had set aside in the original project. Have you got any questions or great information if you?
We did a customer, we did a lot of work in the, what was the trade agency or the elementary school.
That was actually contained in our operations budget.
So that was charged.
That was not in this project.
So this next slide is an abbreviated version of a larger document, which is your financial report. And it shows, again, your original budget with, you know, a few additional line items. And as you can see, it totals $38,991,233. And then the total here is what was extended to date, so that we physically have paid for bills, things that we have encumbered because we have contracts in place and we owe contractors a certain amount of money. So that's included. And then there's some items that we know of right now that we have not received a change order from, from Ekman yet, but we are nowhere in the queue. And then there's also some FFD items that also need to be, you know, maybe it's pricing on, it's bids on, and then get those POs issued. So everything that we know of right this minute is included in the total. So everything that we are aware of at this moment has been accounted for. And what this statement shows us is that, all in right now, we're right about on budget. So if everything comes in exactly how it is, as we know it right this minute, the bond proceeds will cover your entire building project. The challenge that we face is that we're going into the final phase, and there really is no contingency left, because, you know, there's a point, you know, we need to present it accounting for. So we thought about, you know, what might be required to finish the rest of the project. And working with Greg, Greg Allen, and Mike, he put together this list of items that we talked, you know, very likely happened over the course of the next several months. And so we're feeling like it's likely that we could have another $288,000, $186,000 potential expenses coming around. So, you know, we're gonna talk here and see if anybody has any questions about these numbers.
One of the, I made, one of the, to add on to this, it's like, one of the things that, from the last weeks that I wanted to look at is that we have this, like, first of all, if it is close to a budget, it's less than a percent off, the whole budget's pretty darn good for a renovation of a, you know, $39, $20 apartment. So it is thin, but we're gonna be moving on. And with this, I was concerned, because we have construction which we have since ancient age, right? And so what happened, we didn't want to pay these things. And so I had to, to look at that. And we did the next slide on that. But I was, you know, we may have access to, if, on interest, if it happens, but that won't happen until March. So what are we doing? We gave the next slide of finding possible sources of funding. Yeah, these things should come to fruition, you know, between now and April. Russ, you gonna?
Yeah, again, just talking because I just want to make sure that I understand all the contingency. But somewhere with the minutes for someone else, that Ekman had said, gee, we're hoping to, you know, use the whole contingency, and there may be a couple of hundred thousand dollars that, you know, to have allocated.
I probably answered that right now. So the original $320,000, also we had in elementary school, there was a balance, because they don't have account. And of the original 1,2148 dollars, at the Junior Senior High School, there was $204,021 left in that now.
As of the end of last month's bill?
That's combined, you mean, ours?
No, no, that's just...
That's just the...
So there's approximately 200,000, but we have another, almost six months to go on this project. So I can't, I can't say for sure that there's gonna be anything there. John Deloyer from Ekman's here, I'm sure he could weigh in, but my, my feeling is, is that I would not count on that money.
I think, I think it's just, you know, we don't know. It's just, it would just be pure speculation. You gotta count on not having it, I should say.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure my own mind. As I look at the previous slide, it came out with $238,000. It had the whole contingency, and it had all of it being used on that slide, so that we ended up 238,000 total. And so it sort of suggested to me that if I were my partner, the whole contingency was used, and that extra 200,000.
The 204,000 that I referred to is part of Ekman's contract that we have with that, and that's encumbered in their contract and their purchase order that we have with them. They, that, that fund or that contingency is theirs as part of the construction job to deal with issue, unforeseen issues. So we, we have, we encumber it as a total because it is in the contract that we have with them. Our contract does say that if there's any funds left at the end of the job and the project's completed, then it reverts back to us.
Just asking. Any other questions on this slide?
Okay. So I'm sure the next question that is to be asked is, what will happen if something arises, and how would we address the issues, where do the funding come from, over the next six months, given that we have accounted for all of the available budget possibilities? So this slide shows what options we have available to us to fund those items. So the school board has authority over the first two, two trust funds, and right now we have a balance of $287,068. In the technology trust fund, we got $117,752. And those two would have to be used to their fullest extent before we could ever petition the state to access the local school net assessment reserve, which is two and a half percent of our assessment that we are able to retain at the end of this full year. But there's a process by which we have to, those who are willing to access that money. Of course, if we had to, of course, as your superintendent, I don't want to have to take money out of our operating budget. It's supposed to go for teaching and learning, to pay for some construction costs. But if we had to do that, and there's no other alternative, then that's something else that we need to take into consideration as an option. But then the last option is if we needed to, to put a warrant article before the town to cover any significant overheads that we have, and ask them, would you be able to spend that for this period? And so those could be, you know, kind of the menu of options that are available to us to pay for any of this contingency projects that might, you know, come in front of us if this, this completely is so.
I remember when the, what I would call the general fund for the school came in a few years ago. I didn't realize that there was some little verbiage in there that said, before you get to use it, school board, you have to zero out your trust funds.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I read up on this and...
Is it, is it zeroed out, Susan, or is it, you've exhausted it to the extent of those particular items?
Yes, that we could be able to spend it for. So in other words, if, if...
Somebody even said technology would be related to this project.
Right. We couldn't spend the technology trust for a lawyer problem.
However, if we only had, say, 40,000 in technology, we could legitimately say as part of the project, we wouldn't need to spend the rest of that in order to petition for the, for the 412.
Yeah, I just realized there wasn't a petition, a petition for a general fund.
There is, because it truly, it's a, it's a, it's truly a reserve. It's not, it's not a fund you can just select from the, you know.
Somebody tell me that.
Yeah.
Well, it's specifically what the voters authorized to be used. It's not a, a fund that you could just use for something else.
Of course, it could have been contingency that you were asking about.
Now, does the school board allow, you don't need a warrant article to use the trust funds, or the school board to control on that based on its authorization?
True. To put money in to the trust fund requires a warrant article. But once the money's in, then it's a, a vote. I'm not sure, is it majority vote of the board? I don't know. I'm sorry. I'm Ree Degasino. I'm here to help out as the business administrator. I don't know if...
Ree, could you, the people will know. They can't hear you. Unfortunately, you'd have to go to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Ree Degasino, the interim business administrator, to help out until you, the position is filled. I don't know if the school board are agents of the trust funds. If so, the school board has the authority. If they are the agents of the trust fund, they do have the authority to accept it, hopefully based on how the trust funds were set up.
So that's how we cover any unforeseen issue that arises that we may now handle. So the last slide here speaks to, of course, the building project, when you bond it, money was invested. And as a result of that, there's, that's an interest that we can be able to get a fund. But we don't have access to that. The way that you access that money is to put forth a warrant article before the town and seek their approval to be able to spend that money. And so right now, we accumulated $661,450 in interest, and we have one more CD that will expire or come to maturity in March. It's highly unlikely that we will be able to make it to March before we have to break the CDs. So if we were to make it to March, we would get about another $162,000, but we're gonna have to break that CD because we're making bills. And so I just estimated that we probably would get another between 50 and 90,000, depending on when we have to break that last CD of interest. So on this last slide, based on this, you know, kind of evaluation of, you know, what we would like to be able to procure, or additional work we would like to have happen, where we sought input from, you know, teachers and administrators. These are the items in the order in which we recommend that they be funded with bond interest, much if the town would be so kind as to approve it. So the furniture here, you might ask, well, why is the furniture here? There's also furniture that's been encumbered in, you know, the base of the budget. And, and the furniture in there are just simple things like... And, and the furniture in there are just simple things like chairs and tables, desks for the teacher. But what it doesn't include are some of the other things that make the teaching and learning environment, you know, what we would want it to be for, for kids and for staff. So, things like in the elementary floor, buying carpet that, you know, for students to sit on, that's fire retardant, some bookshelves and, you know, some teachers would like an additional whiteboard. There's some cabinetry, it's new work that, that folks have requested now that we've been in the space. There's just things we've observed that would really enhance the learning experiences for students that we weren't able to capture on the basis of the budget. So, so that's what the furniture lines here represent. Also, this is not just my observation, but this is for teachers and students that are in these classrooms. But there's three science labs at the junior senior high school that do not have, do not have suspended ceilings, and the acoustics in there are very, very tough. So, when you're sitting in the classroom, no matter where the teacher is in that room, it's really difficult to hear. And I was engaged in a group discussion at a table with students the other day, and I had difficulty hearing them across because the acoustics in the room were just that, that challenging. So, so that's what that item's about. Of course, you wouldn't know that till you get in the space and using it, that how important that is, or that you would have that kind of acoustical reaction based on, yeah. So, even with what we call red cats, which are auditory devices that help you project, it's, it still isn't adequate, and that would only be for the teacher anyways, never mind the students when you're engaging in group sessions. So, so that, that's an important item. And then there's some electrical, as Mike mentioned, that, you know, some of the lab stations, in addition to electrical, and then there's other targeted locations where we found that having more electrical would be really advantageous.
So, I know these, I know these items you've just talked about firsthand. I, I took a day off and helped them move in to the, to these science labs, and it's, it's, but, you know, the, the, the acoustics aren't tough. You gotta like yell to, to have people hear you. And the other thing, I went to plug something in on one of the lab stations, and there's no outlets. So, you, you gotta have outlets on those stations.
The stadium request, the double sided beds, bugs and burgers too.
That was a concerning.
Yeah, the gas, but we, we, we're able.
Not bugs and burgers, the jets.
Yes, yes, we have, we made provisions for that within the base of the request already. The, the gymnasium features, those were just things that you could, you know, and that, that's a great community asset too, but it's not just for us, but for any of the users, those, the gymnasium at the elementary school. So, that, that was something, it might have been an add all at some point, I'm not sure, but.
It was.
It was, yeah. So, you see that. And then the white dimming is, again, something that in practice we would have known, but one of the things that we noticed is that for classrooms that have dimming switches, there's a significant difference in the experience students are having in their classroom, because if the lights are on with the whiteboards, and you've been, I know you've experienced this, the, the flashing on it is so great, it's really hard to see what you're presenting on that. And, and the only other option in some of the classrooms that don't have dim is to turn it off. And then when you turn it off, the room's dark, and where you're trying to take notes or read, it's too dark. For the classrooms that have the dimmer switch, where you can just alter the level of lighting in the room, it just makes a significant difference. So, you'd probably say, well, why do some have dimmers and some don't? It's, it's, Greg explained to me that some of the work that was done was, was done using some other.
So, the elementary lighting, which has all dimming systems on it, was done through a different program. It was done through a performance contract, and then as part of the design that we worked on was dimming in those. The lighting that's at the high school is part of the construction package, which does not have the dimming option as, with it. So, they're actually two completely separate projects. One's included in the construction, and one was, the, the school board may remember when I requested funds to get an ESCO or performance contract. So, that's why it's different.
So, that's why we know there's big differences, because in the rooms of the elementary schools, mergers and dimmers, you know, it's significantly a different experience for kiddos than it is when you only have the choice of one clock. So, that's what that item's about, and then the ductwork leakage, I can't understand that well, but it's.
So, in our elementary school, we have a lot of existing ductwork, and the existing ductwork was not sealed well when it was put in, so we have a lot of air loss or air leakage in the ductwork, which is affect, affects the performance of the system. So, we've had our contractor take a look at it to be able to address some of that to increase the performance in the, in the facility.
So, Greg, just for clarity, was back on one of the other slides, we, we, when we started the project, we took money out of the contingency for ductwork at the elementary school.
Correct.
Right, it was, it was almost three hundred thousand. This is separate from that?
Correct. Two different, two different areas.
Two different issues.
Yep. The, the original project or the original three hundred was from when a prior renovation happened, the ductwork was removed from the building for the fresh air systems, and it's never reinstalled. So, that three hundred thousand dollar project was to reinstall the fresh air ductwork system to the addition that was put on. This is existing ductwork that remained from the nineteen eighty-five addition that is performance wise, is not very, it's not good. We lose about thirty percent of its efficiency through leak laws.
I know you can't compare the two, but it appears to me things that we said don't need to be enhanced, like the ductwork in this particular situation, the elementary school, or part of the heating system in the high school, that we said, that's good enough, we don't have to replace it, no causing us.
So, this is, this, the duct repairs are at the elementary school. So, the heating system.
High school.
The high school, we do have a fair amount of existing piping that is still remaining and will remain in this, in, in use as part of this project. It was not replaced as part of the, the overall construction project.
It's been under stress, it needs to be.
And that's not reflected in here, but it is reflected, earlier slide that you'll see where it says about fifty thousand dollars. And that's to address some of those concerns that we have throughout that building, when we know we have some troubling areas.
Just interesting, things we said were good enough, something that would be done to be.
And if, remember, the original goal was to make sure that the air quality in both the junior senior high school and the elementary school was comparable and up to standards, and this is making sure that happens.
If, if we're losing thirty percent to leakage, and that was determined during commissioning?
There was.
Is it like pressure testing, is that?
Uh, it's part of a balancing system where you come in and make sure that the diffusers are supplying the room and returning is, is the correct amount based on what the particular room is supposed to have, and the existing systems calculated out that we were losing thirty percent of leakage through ceiling, you know, ductwork gaps and things like that in the ceiling, and so that's, that's where.
So, if we, if we fix that, should that save over time on?
It would save us energy costs because we're basically heating or cooling, well, we don't have really much cooling, but heating spaces that are not occupied spaces between ceilings and things like that.
The last two items are going to be somewhat related to the slide before. We're gonna have to use the limited resources we have in those trust funds during the course of the next six months, the end of the project, we would be lucky if there was no emergency funds available should something arise after the whole project is complete. So, this would be a way to be able to restore the money that we have to withdraw from those trust funds at the end of the project, to make sure that we have some access to some resources, which is something that is not abated during the course of the project.
Sort of a timing issue, interim loan basis.
Yep.
Exactly.
And then they, these, these are all listed here in one, in one list, but as a, as a legal matter, we'd have to, the trust funds would have to be a separate warrant article versus the, the bond interest. So, it doesn't change the numbers, it just, they're gonna be, they'd have to be separated out?
They're both separate, shall we explain that?
Would the warrant, warrant article just vote on using that money, or would it specifically address a list like this that says, you're not only approving the use of that interest that's part of the project, but here specifically where that's gonna be directed?
It's a great question, and I don't know the exact answer. We're gonna have to work with council on that, because there's a couple, a couple of issues within what you just said. I don't know, as you have to specify it, you may want to as part of information so the voters kind of know what they're voting on. But, you know, again, what if between now, you know, we need to get, this is a timing thing, because we need to get the, we need to get the warrant articles in in December, they need to be submitted there. But like, what if, for instance, something arises after that, like a two hundred thousand dollar item we weren't foreseeing that's not on this list, you know? Can you have sort of, you know, and for any other construction related items on there? We're gonna have to work out with council if, what the language can be.
So, I don't sound negative, I, I don't think three or four hundred thousand dollars is capital reserve is particularly significant. We have to spend thirty-nine million dollars to renovate the building. It gives me actually a heart attack to say how much protection do we have in the future of something that's running. I would be very supportive of the school building capital, if it was a reserve.
Yep.
And I would suggest it all went according to nine hundred dollars, but if any additional money that we add on the interest side, and then absent something else happening that we could afford as a facility trust.
It's still peanuts, but it's something.
It is, but it's an insurance, a little bit of an insurance policy.
That is it. Any other questions?
I'm a little bit confused on the timing of this, that if we were to go forward with this, I assume this is a recommendation, and so this gets approved in March. And there's some things like furniture, obviously, you just ordered standalone, but at that point, the construction and our contract is pretty much done with. And so, are these costs associated with what it would take? I mean, because some things like suspended ceilings, for instance, I assume we need our contractors to do for us. Those costs include all of that?
So, the suspended ceiling, what we would end up doing is, if that got approved, then we would put that out to a bidding process to have that done. So, Ekman, Ekman would be asked to, to submit on that also, because it is a separate part of, outside of the project, or outside of their scope in the project, I should say.
The second sheet that it lists, highlights on it. We had other needs that we identified that we don't have any resources for right now. We really missed, I did at least mention it before we closed the meeting. And so, if you look at the bottom part, you'll see a couple of things on there. But underneath that, there were also some other things that were part of your ad alternates, and it wasn't, I didn't think they were important, it was just that we only have six hundred and sixty-one thousand, you know, it's not sufficient to cover, you know, one point four million dollars with the needs. So, there are a few items here that I would just like to call to your attention that we also had on our list. So, at the elementary school, the playground, and there are some safety concerns there that have brought to our attention. The PTA is doing active fundraising to generate some money to replace that. If we could help support their efforts in replacing the elementary school playground, that would be something that we certainly appreciate. And then there were generators, two generators that were at odds. My understanding is that the generator at the junior senior high school would enable the community to have an emergency shelter, so that if there was something that happened, that, you know, the showers, there's a kitchen, all of those things that, that we could use that facility for. The elementary school does not have showers, things like that. So, we put that as the second, so that's why the generators are in order that we're in. Not that we don't think it's a full generator for the elementary school, we just thought that putting that generator in junior senior high school, money permitting, you know, would be the, would be our first choice. And then there's landscaping that was at the elementary school and at the high school that we just felt like maybe we could do some of that over time in separate projects, maybe try some fundraising in the future to, to be able to screw stuff a little bit. But for right now, we put those over on the priorities to the right business. I just felt it was important to mention, because those items are also on our radar, but we just had to make some choices.
Susan, given the fact that we're going through budgeting right now, it might make sense for you to contact the town administrator and see if the town might be interested in contributing to this generator, given the fact that it's a, a community need.
Interest free loan.
A hundred thousand dollars would.
Now, where is that? I mean, for years, we've been talking about trying to have a school be an emergency shelter.
Right.
I think that's what I have.
Well, it's, it's because of the generator. I, we have to go to Exeter, I believe. So, this, yeah.
I mean, as far as I know, the school board and the council's never been able to agree to use the high school as a.
Right, and, and my point being, for a hundred thousand dollars, joining with us, we've got a joint problem solved.
Oh, I agree.
So, I don't know how you make the offering, Susan, but it'd be, it would be worth.
I'm happy to run downstairs tomorrow morning and ask our administrator, or use the kind of this, help us find some resources for that.
So, coming, coming full circle, and we can get into some more questions, the, the overall purpose, there are a couple purposes here tonight, was to just sort of refresh folks, it's been a while since we saw all the numbers. That's why we, we started at the beginning, you know, went through a little history and where we are and what we kind of foresee on the remaining horizon. The second aspect is, I'm hoping to get the building committee's input on, on what they think of the, of the, that slide, the prioritization of, of that, and also of what, what Susan just talked about in terms of the, the ad alternates, it got sort of bumped down to the, to the lower priority. If there are any thoughts on this, just, is this, do people see the wisdom in this proposal for a, a warrant article?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable going forward with that one. I think what I heard on that list, they're all things that would really be, not items that I prefer the list, so I, I fully support going forward with that.
Yeah, I have no problem supporting it. I guess my biggest concern is whether we, if there were two issues that we knew about today that could come back more heavily in the D E S put requirement and exceeded what's in the estimate here, or the other one on additional asbestos, or as we're getting the gas phase in the old building, getting in there. Do we have any comfort level in the numbers that are in here that say that the worst we think could happen is, what is it, fifty thousand asbestos removal with additional thirty-five, the D E S cleanup thirty-two, or?
So, Ekman won't know about the D E S cleanup, because it's not part of them. The thirty-five thousand is asbestos that we locate that's outside of, or I shouldn't say we, Ekman locates that's outside of their scope, so part of their scope is to abate asbestos that's in the spaces where they have to modify work in. If we come across elbows on old piping that wasn't to be touched, part of what we, we're doing with those, those funds that are targeted is to remove that asbestos while it's exposed. That's what that thirty-five thousand represents.
Yeah.
Is that a hard number though?
It's not, that's, based on what we've already run into prior, that's how I came up with the estimate on that. The three, thirty-two thousand, nine thirty-seven on the D E S is based on what we spent on the cubic yardage of moved product and what D E S is requesting for additional yardage. So, that's how that number came up.
How did that additional request come about?
So. So we, we did the original removal, and our consultant on the project removed everything that they felt needed to be removed. In the original permitting from them, it showed an additional amount that they thought may have been removed. So DES, when all the paperwork got filed, said, well, why didn't you remove that other 17 cubic yards of potentially contaminated soil? So we worked with our engineering firm on that to create an answer why that didn't happen, and now we're right in the pending point of are they going to accept that or not? We've asked them to accept it, that it doesn't need to be abated and removed, because it didn't come up to the levels of contaminated soils that, of the areas that we did have to remove, but because it was in the original permit, that's how we ended up getting to where we were.
Yeah, if you mentioned it, then I'd make a lot more. We told them we're gonna remove it, but you know, you're saying, oh, we didn't remove it.
Correct. But our consulting, environmental consultants on this, Ransom, has filed with, with DES requesting that we don't, because it is not consider, does not meet thresholds of contaminated soils when the testing was done after we got everything removed that we had to remove.
Ransom is not, DES often uses outside experts, and they delegate their authority to effectively say, you're a land specialist in the shoreline, you go out and take a look and tell us.
Ransom's our contractor who did the project.
So we're, they, they're aware of an issue, and we're having our contractor say, it's manageable the way it is.
Correct.
And doing the full thing. It's not ransom saying, gee, from the DES perspective, I don't think this is necessary.
No. It was part of the filings that we're required to do, and the total yardage that we had to remove. And since in the original initial permit said that the, the estimated yardage was this, when we did the project and removed everything that was contaminated to the levels, it was less than, and they're saying, basically, we want you to remove that, and ransom's coming back and saying, wait a minute, but it's not contaminated, so why would you remove it? And so that's where we are with DES right now.
It's, so it's a matter of degree. I mean, it, it, you know, in terms of the DES decision, they, they don't, it's not a must, must do, it's.
What DES does or does not want.
From a volume standpoint, it's a similar volume to what was removed?
No, no. We moved quite a bit more than, than the 17 cubic yards. We removed over, over 150 cubic yards of material from that property.
Okay, I thought it was supposed to.
No.
My, my question still, whether it be in Ekman's contingency, or what's part of the building that they're gonna fuss with, or that's a technical charge, versus something that could bite us in the area that Ekman's not looking at, but could be recovered. These are the areas that we know right now. When are we gonna, not that it's gonna change the way I'm looking at this, because we're gonna have to cut the jobs they have in the budget. There's still a little bit of room left that we can take a minor hit or two, and then we run out of potential money unless we grant the interest or the trust funds to bring in. And as Mike and I have discussed a little bit before, anything that has to do with the warrant article is not gonna be done until April, you know, or the end of March when it gets authorized. And how quickly that money can come in here, if we can't commit to fixing something within the bond scope, or have additional money to pay for the bill, we can't answer for money we have to recap to have. Can we, in other words, can we say in March, oh gee, the voters voted to be able to use that money on the project, let's extend these requests in the project for another three or four months and spend that money for finding an environmental problem two months from then, and then the end of December, as we're kicking around things, and all of a sudden we pour right through the three or four hundred thousand dollars, because there's, because everything else gets pushed off even further.
With the DES stuff, if they say that we have to remove it, we're gonna have to remove it. And funding for that, we will, we'll have to find. I mean, it's, we won't have a choice on that.
Well, Russ, I would like to think that as we go through this, that list layer, those things can all wait, so DES and the asbestos will take priority. So if for some reason the asbestos pool of luck has been all the money on the asbestos and a bunch of those things wouldn't get done.
And that's why it's important to clarify with council that it can be used for a related construction purpose, not specific, specifically these.
I agree. I just don't want to spend the money on that and then find out we've got a bigger asbestos problem.
Yeah, I was just sort of looking, we have to, we're gonna vote on this in March, and we're gonna open up the last Pandora box potential sometime around March, and say, oh gee, we got another problem here. The training issue with that, it is.
I would say, maybe have John come up, but we've, they've started the demolition in that final phase. I haven't heard of any things being found as of the demolition, but I don't know if John has any more insight on that.
Correct. They have just started the last phase of demo. When we're done with that, really what's left, the gym, some newer stuff that wouldn't have had asbestos. We've gone through quite a bit of this building.
What do you think the timeline is for, to finish the demolition?
This calendar year, because we're gonna be putting it back together as December, January, and walk our way into spring.
So putting a temperature control in, how are we doing in the end of December, beginning of January is what we should do. Know whether.
You'll hear us raising our hand if we see we've been pretty fortunate going through.
No, I, I think it's been planned so far, we're not sure, just that last little piece of foot.
The timing issue, Russ, relates to the earlier slides of those, those funding sources, and that, that was my concern, because even if the warrant article's approved for the full amount, that's not gonna be till March, and these, these contingent items we're talking about would happen before then, if at all.
Well, if you have the three or 400,000 dollars of trust funds that you can reach out for to cover that gap.
Right. In, in Susan's last slide, sort of assumes, it's, it assumes that that happens with the replenishment, and, you know, like you said, it's miniscule in, in all events, but that's the theory, is that we would use it in the interim and replenish it through, in part, the interest.
Mike, I have one question, and Susan, we can probably address this. On the elementary school playground, is that an aesthetic situation, or more than it, or are there safety concerns? And if there are, should we address those sooner than later?
Well, we did put it on the CIP. So in any way that we are being able to announce to the public, this is a necessity we have now. And as I said, the, you know, of course, there is perhaps, you know, some of the, just the enough we need, but my understanding is it doesn't meet like certain code requirements, and it's, it's aging. So, Sean, do you have any more details on that?
Yeah, just, we put it on there, I can think of one apparatus in particular. I mean, it's like a cargo net, but it's made, kind of a hard plastic materials. I don't know when that was put in, it was probably 15 years ago.
When my son's in the.
Yeah, so, you know, weather wears it out, we replace it as best we can, but it's just getting to the point now that the life expectancy of some of the playground equipment is, it's close to.
It would definitely have bigger fish fry potentially, but just.
What's a valid concern, and we can, the other thing is, is to, is to, conceptually, is to keep those sort of ongoing CIP and, and/or operational issues separate from what we're talking about in terms of this construction budget, because I don't know, is the playground, it's, it's a valid issue, but I don't know, it's, it's not, wasn't really part of the scope of the construction.
No. You have another timing issue. I'm chairing the CIP as well, and I applaud the fact that the school is starting to put
together stuff, putting money away for a reading day, or correcting issues, but if that's on the ballot, then you have to make the warrant article, as I understand, the school, for the CIP, I have decided to reject it, in which case, again, that's not even voted on until March. And the concept of the CIP is to be able to put away money each year, so that sometime in the future, you can make this improvement. I don't know if we have it as 100% funded item, as soon as it's voted upon, if it's approved, in which case you'd have to probably put that into the operating budget if it was that urgent to correct. I think it's, it's just fascinating, all the little pieces in the puzzle can really stop you in the process of, which is why we need capital, so you don't have to get more. I appreciate your discussion.
Mike, I, I certainly would have to agree with Eric in terms of, you know, this list of items. I have, I have no issue with the warrant article for the bond interest, and I, I don't see any frivolous items here. I guess I do cry over a little spilt milk with the ductwork leakage of $90,000, because in 1975, they were doing duct testing and balancing, and some things just didn't happen in the past. I feel like we've, the work that's currently happening is certainly a lot better than that. And, you know, we're paying the price for that, but it's just my goal, the school will, and that's a long time. Certainly, everything here on this list would be appropriate items to do.
Only 44 years, and you still remember it.
Yeah, I cry over it a little bit too, because I thought.
All the money.
That that would have been put in the engineering budget to bring the school up to code, that we would have been able to somehow identify it in the, how much did we put in, 300 and something thousand dollars?
300.
300, so it should have been 390. And, but, that spilled milk as well.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
Mike, as long as we go forward with the assumption that we're gonna try to make sure that asbestos and the DES we have to take care of ahead of these items, I fully support going forward.
Okay. Makes sense?
Even, even more importantly, from a strategic basis, even if that gets up to be the 750, the 750,000 with the last CB, if we can recover our interest. You're talking about 1% of the project cost being in the 390,000 dollars.
Right.
You're talking about the interest maybe getting close to 2% if your alternative is to say, gee, let's give this back as a credit to the taxpayer in this one year, so that the, the rate goes down by three cents for a year, and it goes back up by three cents the next year, versus having some permanent value come out of that extra interest money that can benefit our students in classrooms, or support the teachers' reality of going into the classroom saying, gee, I think I need to chair this event, or other, you know, it'll make it better for the students to hear. I'd rather have that small, fairly comparatively small amount of money, not go as a taxpayer, but go to finish off.
Then it's all for the walnut project then?
Yeah, and the alternative is if, if it, if it somehow didn't pass, these needs are still there, and, you know, and they're gonna be, have to be addressed some.
They'll come about some way.
Yeah, yeah. So, thank you for your input. If there's nothing else, I just, just, the next, next meeting would be on December 17th, and folks, we're, I, I sent out a schedule of meetings sort of coming up, staying on the same, you know, the same Tuesday. And I, I really want to thank folks again for appearing for these. We've been at it for how many years now?
Have a holiday pizza party.
We can, we can do pizza, Russ, I'll, I'll buy. And then, you know, we, we were down to a handful of meetings, we really are, you know, until April, and so this, this was, this was, I think, an important meeting. It was the, the meeting where we sort of, you know, we're getting to a point where we have to make some choices, you know, on the warrant article, so I really appreciate people taking time.
We need to vote on this.
Something we just chatted about, just to make a last point to the school board, is, you know, this side of the table. Yeah, we had talked physical, we had talked about getting people in the community to actually physically touch and see the work that's been done.
Yes.
If we're gonna be asking a little for a warrant article regardless of the size of it. I guess my question is, it's a bad season to do that, but either the marketing campaign or the reaching out, and, I mean, they, they sit back and they, I don't apologize for pontificating about this, the look on the elementary kids' faces when they went into a gym visit, Sean put on, let's get everybody together and celebrate a gym type thing, was almost worth the 39 million dollars of that.
Yeah.
It was really pleasing, and I hope, I, I know the high school's going under a lot of stuff, and people are living, and hoping people are saying, we can see the end of this, and it's good, but getting the community to engage in that in the next several months before the vote, get some of the appreciation of the students, some faculty, and students.
It's a good point, Russ. We, we had been talking recently about doing sort of that, you know, a community open house, if you will, like in April, but, you know, where, where votes in March. You know, we'll probably be at a stage where we can do it. You know, there'll be some areas that are still off limits, because there are, you know, finishing up construction, but the, the cafeteria will be done, and, you know, the additions are done, the elementary's done, so I think you could have people in to see enough of it that they'd say, wow. Because what, because what's there is really impressive.
That, and the other thing I can think of, we've talked about a lot of the rest of the year, is the security side. I mean, it's invisible, but it's so visible in the newspapers, and the throwing things that just people will come through, or access being restricted, and maybe give a little public spaces inside the building and not in the classroom. So all that kind of stuff will be, I think, we have, we'll be able to people's comfortable to feel that's the danger.
Great. Any, anything else? All right, we're adjourned.